For April 11th, 2019, start by adopting the agenda. Someone would like to move that, please. Counselor Sherlett, Counselor Cross, all in favor? Motion's carried. Would you like to adopt the minutes of the special budget consultation minutes of March 7th, 2019? Someone move to adopt those? Counselor Younger, Counselor Sherlett? Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion's carried. Committee of the Whole Minutes, March 14th, 2019. Is there a move to adopt those? Counselor Brooks Hill, Counselor Cross? Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion's carried. Moving on to the Special Committee of the Whole Budget Minutes, March 21st. A resolution to adopt those, please. Counselor Sherlett, Counselor Younger? Any discussion on those minutes? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
I think, uh, I'm sorry, there's a February 21st. Is... Yeah? On the actual minutes, it says March 21st.
Yeah, it's still on the other lines.
Okay, sorry about that.
That says March 21st.
Same.
Might be an updated version.
If we did that special...
Oh, I want to highlight it.
Call the final name, I get it.
Spot out the differences. Thanks for noticing. Alright, so I'm gonna move on to 4A, business arising from the minutes of March 7th, special budget consultation minutes. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, moving on to Committee of the Whole Minutes, March 14th, 2019. Any discussion on those minutes? The Special Committee of the Whole Budget Minutes of March 21st, 2019. Seeing none? We're gonna go right into delegations and presentations. We have Canadian Mountain Holidays here. So, gentlemen, if you'd like to come up to the podium, thank you for coming.
The worship and counselors, thanks very much for the opportunity of sharing some thoughts with you today, and we wanted to speak today about the longstanding partnership between CMH and Revelstoke. Before we introduce ourselves, I think the planners will speak for about 10 minutes if we can, and hopefully we can answer some questions for you afterwards if that's the case. And I think what we'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is that this would be the first of what we hope will be a number of regular reports to the community. I think, as you'll hear us speak, we probably need to talk to the community more about who we are and what we do, and this will be the first of that. So as an introduction, Rob and I have been, uh, I should click this, so there you go. Rob and I have been with both of CMH for many years, and we both are deeply appreciative of the strong relationship between CMH and Revelstoke, and the success in our business, and vice versa with the community. Rob largely works on the mountain operations side as a professional mountain guide, so looks after everything to do with mountain safety, et cetera, and pretty much everything else with the company, I think, as well. And then myself, as a professional forester and biologist, I work largely on land use, environmental, and government relations issues for the company. So we're here in Revelstoke this afternoon, but for those who don't know, our operations are spread across the interior of British Columbia, as you'll see in the slide in front of you there. Obviously, that's where Revelstoke is, but it shows the relative location of our other operations in relation to Revelstoke. We operate in total from eight heliski lodges and three hotels throughout our operations, but clearly Revelstoke is the epicenter of all that amazing skiing and hiking. So specific to Revelstoke, we've got a, um, an operation based here in town that is still more than 40 years after we began working very closely with Regent Hotel and the Brushki family. To the north of us, there are three lodges, Gothic's Adamants, which is pictured here, and the Monarchies near the Micah Dam. To the south, we have three more operations, that's Galena, near Trout Lake, and Nomads are, uh, and Nomads and Co. near, closer to the Cusp. As background, our founder, Austrian mountain guide Hans Moser, started both heliskiing and CMH back in 1965. And funny enough, it was after the urging of a guest that he tried using helicopter to access skit terrain, and despite his reluctance and thinking that nobody in their craziest minds would ever do such a thing, it actually turned out to be pretty okay. In the partnership with the Brushki family, and it continues to this day, we actually first skied in the Revelstoke area in 1977, and that's about the same time that Peter Schumacher started Selkirk Tanger's helicopter skiing, and we've been here ever since. One of the things we wanted to share with you today was our perspective on the nature of that longstanding relationship between CMH and Revelstoke. Now, there are things, as I said, about CMH that probably a lot of people don't know, and that's largely our fault. We probably don't talk to the community enough about some of the things as much as we should, and so that's why we're here today. We have a significant number of our CMH colleagues who live, work, and play in Revelstoke. As of this winter, that equates to 21 full-time employees making their homes in Revelstoke. That includes 84 seasonal employees also making their homes in Revelstoke. And in many cases, that also means they're raising their families here, they're involved in clubs and schools and other organizations. I'll talk about that more later. But across the full-time employees, the average annual salary is about $85,000. Aside from the people who live, work, play, and spend their salaries in Revelstoke, we also partner with a large number of businesses, large and small, across many sectors of the economy. On average, we invest about $2.5 million annually in purchasing in Revelstoke. Most of that goes to local accommodations, but that also includes purchasers of many local suppliers, and to your helicopter service providers. That's not, I would suggest, an insignificant number, given that it happens every year and it has been happening for 40 years. Here's just a few examples of the businesses with whom we partner in town, though the list is really very long, this is just a few. There ranges from plumbing companies, hardware stores, and fuel suppliers, to painters, food stores, and even Lord Cole. Many of our guests who choose to ski at CMH in Revelstoke actually ski here because they love the authentic mountain vibe. But our relationship with the community is not just about commerce, and I think that's an important statement for us today. It's also about supporting local not-for-profits that are central parts of this community's social fabric. This happens at the company level, but even more importantly, it happens because our own employees are passionate about and committed to making this a even better place to live. So you may not be aware that CMH Gothic's Lodge to the north of here is actually a major supporter of the local food bank. Frozen meals that are extra to our needs are actually brought to town on a fairly regular basis, and we recently heard a story about a fellow that was homeless and having some struggles stopping one of our guides on the street and thanking them for the very fine duck dinner he had the night before. But I think through, um, through CMH and all my helicopters, you'll know that the Kingsbury Foundation actually funded the Kingsbury Bridge across the river, and, um, but that's in name of Mark Kingsbury, who succeeded Hans Moser as the president of our company. Like many in the community, we're pleased to be one of the investors in the new helipad at the hospital, and actually our staff, many of them use their tips from our guests to send underprivileged kids to camp every year, and they've also strongly supported the development of the skate park. Our staff, as fathers and mothers and local residents of the community, also get involved in many local organizations. That includes the little ski club, coaching youth sports, the Revelstoke Cycling Association, and doing a number of volunteer hours in trail building and other kinds of things, including avalanche awareness skills, which we'll all talk about in a second. You may also be aware that we actually formed some really strong local partnerships with the Tunaha and Suppapik Nations. This past year, for the first time, we hosted a youth leadership camp at one of our lodges, where you have the young people come in and not only learn about themselves in their traditional territories, but they're also able to meet some of our staff and start to understand what a professional career in tourism actually looks like. We're very excited about this program and hope to do more in the future with them. We also have a strong partnership in place with Outward Bound Canada. We did two programs with them, uh, we do two programs with them each year. The first is the Women of Courage program, which takes women from, uh, very difficult domestic situations and allows them to come into a safe place where they can gain strength. And I know through some local organizations, we made sure that that opportunity was available to the women in the Revelstoke area last year. I'm unable to say whether people from here locally were able to be part of that. We also do a veterans program where folks from military, had military service, who have PTSD symptoms, come into our lodges and actually gain, gain some strength and work with each other. I'm now gonna turn over to Rob.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having us here. My background is, is a mountain and ski guide, so I'd like to just make a few points related to our expertise in guiding and managing risks of travel in the mountain environment. First one would be around local rescue capability. Along with our colleagues in other heli and snowgaff skiing companies, like folks from Selkirk Tanger's with us here today, our professional, professionally trained and incredibly experienced mountain ski guides provide a level of potential rescue response that few other communities anywhere have. And while this is in our core business, we do react to what we're called upon, and as some of you will be aware, of the boulder mountain in the Canot Creek, avalanches, and the critical role that heliskiing guides played in the responses to those tragic situations. And along with all the guides in the, uh, the community, Revelstoke can boast of the presence of many helicopters and trained mountain pilots that can respond to all sorts of emergencies, and they wouldn't be here in that sort of numbers without the heliskiing business in town. And aside from the rescue perspective, our primary goal at CMH is, is safety, and it's not just, uh, safety of our own business. One of the most effective measures to enhance safety of many skiers and sledders that recreate in the mountains around Revelstoke and throughout BC are the public avalanche forecasts and special warnings issued by Avalanche Canada. What many people don't realize is that these are largely formulated from the daily observations and hazard assessments from the many heliskiing and cat skiing guides and other avalanche professionals working in the area. And the input from our 130 certified mountain guides working within the 11 CMH operations is a very significant, significant contribution to this. CMH, like many of our industry colleagues, also supports avalanche research at places like Simon Fraser University, University of Calgary, and currently Helicat Canada, which is the industry organization, contributes $40,000 a year towards an avalanche research chair at SFU, and the CMH's share is around $15,000 of that. David?
So another point that is often missed is that when we talk about the world, our true world of the CMH experience, we always talk about Revelstoke, and that means to our network of agents in pretty much every country in the world where we have skiers. So through our sales and marketing efforts, the world hears about Revelstoke through many channels. Aside from the simple mention of Revelstoke over and over, this includes film and image shots taken here. We partner with a local CrossFit, um, company to do a workout program for our guests, and we actually sponsor films and engage the media worldwide. Many of you may also not know about our strong and longstanding relationships with local forest companies. We work closely with foresters from RCFC, Downey LP, Stella Jones, and BC Timber Sales, not only in planning their harvesting and silviculture, but in developing and implementing our own spacing, brushing, glating, and helipad work. I'm proud of the innovative ways we found together to ensure that the local forest around here produces both forest products and skiing experiences. Environmental stewardship is a foundational piece for us in our business. In fact, from our earliest days, Hans Moser really believed that we had a moral and ethical responsibility to take care of the special places that we share with our guests. These are our many years of focus right now, reducing our reliance on fossil fuels, reducing our waste, improving how we manage fuel, and addressing the needs of wildlife. Speaking of wildlife, and I know that in this community and many others across Eastern British Columbia, this is a very, very big deal right now, so the chat, the, the opportunity for us to be here today is quite timely. I, I spend about half of my time as a professional biologist working on mountain caribou recovery and half for the last 10 years. Our approach, in essence, at CMH is to let the animals decide where they want to be, and then we react by leaving them alone and skiing elsewhere. Most of that done is done quite proactively, using habitat maps and current and historic observations to plan our daily activities. We focus on constant improvement in terms of dealing with issue, and we're heavily involved in past and current recovery initiatives, partly by bringing solutions to the table, and partly by ensuring that people understand the role that we and our sector colleagues play in, in communities like Revelstoke. Actually, and I personally hope that adventure tourism is one of those examples where society is not gonna have to try and choose between the environment or the economy. We've got some interesting solutions that come in between. And I think a quick example of in which we deal with wildlife, we have a very sophisticated data collection and decision-making tool in place called Snowbase, and you'll see, see if this actually works. There we are, you can see the cursor there. We actually proactively close runs, and so the runs you see up there with a little wildlife symbol, a red flag, actually means they're closed because we know that there are wildlife in that area. So we can close single runs or even entire drainages if we know or even suspect that animals are gonna be a specific area, and we literally just go somewhere else. So we hope that we've given you a snapshot of who we are as a company and as people, and of our perspective and pride on the longstanding relationship between CMH and Revelstoke. We've been here for more than 40 years, and we hope to be here for many decades into the future. So through you, through you, your worship, we thank you for your time today, and we'd be more than welcome to answer any questions that you or the counselors might have for us today. So thank you.
David Rock, and for all of you that are on heliskiing and support heliskiing, we thank you for coming to us today. Definitely, um, it's a timely thing with the caribou issue, but also, um, for those of you who may not have been to funeral service for a very long time, and had a relationship with CMH during some of those tragic times, and without me getting emotional, the, uh, the relationship is second to none because of the professionalism of the people in your organization and in the heliskiing organization, uh, as a whole. And so I'm very grateful for what you do and contribute to our community and to contribute to humanity, bringing your guests in, making sure that they're taken care of in a way that is second to none, is pretty awe-inspiring. So I thank you all for doing that, and I thank you all for the work that you do, and I thank you for living here in Revelstoke. It's a very awesome thing for those of you who are here. Counselors, is there any of you that have any comments or questions?
Thank you for your kind comments, your worship. We'll pass it on.
Counselor Oliver?
I've got a serious, uh, just on the caribou thing, it's a bit contentious issue for us community.
Monday night?
Just the background, the sound, you guys have probably looked at the sound when people once saw the helicopters on caribou. What's your, what's your take at this, at this stage?
The science and our, and our anecdotal experience both, I think, shows that caribou in particular, probably more so than mountain goats, can actually become quite habituated to noise if it's in a regular and predictable pattern, and that seems to be the, the, the key. They're, they're quite, they quite clearly will respond to things that are surprise to them, but if they see things in regular and predictable patterns, my experience as biologist and health scare has been that they are much more, they don't show any flight or, or flight responses to it. And in fact, we track every single observation we make every day, and so if we see caribou, we automatically react to, or we note how they react, and then we also make a note about how, what decisions we made as a result. So we see that quite commonly, that if it's regular and predictable, they don't seem to have an issue with it.
So you spotted caribou, and you closed the run, and then you dictated for a number of days following that?
At least in the middle of 48 hours, we do, and we don't go back there until we can confirm that the animals have left that area. If they're still there, we just could, we continue to close them for another 48 hours, and that continues until we're sure that they've moved on. Yep.
Yes, sir.
During the spacing, and then the cleaning work that continues on, we do have a season that pretty well, it's been going on for quite some time.
Yes.
Do you think that influences the, uh, the ability for the predators to travel, or other, other factors?
No, no, I think that's a great question. We, we don't see any evidence of that, or really, at all, largely because the kind of spacing and brushing that we do is very, I would call it surgical. We, we go in and take individual trees out, we create, and we open up the forest a little bit for skiing. If anything, I would flip around and say we've done some research, and we're continuing this summer to actually show that in those mid-elevation, high-elevation forests, the English Brucea Alpine fir forests, uh, the kind of spacing we do to open up the forest slightly has actually slightly increased the lichen production in some of those areas. But we want to do more research to confirm that, but that's, that's an interesting twist on providing for caribou and providing for skiing at the same time. So we're, we're hopeful that that'll turn into something more robust in terms of some good research. Yep.
Anyone else have a question? Counselor Cross?
Yeah, first of all, thanks very much for coming today, and for one, I appreciate being some science behind this issue, because I think it's fine to have an opinion, and I'm all for saving the caribou, but I also like a scientific approach to this, and I'd like us to know that we have a shot at saving these particular herds, right? So I, my question is really quite general, as a trained biologist, what are your thoughts on how we do save these herds? If they're sampleable, in the locales that we're talking about?
Is this being recorded? I think, I don't know, I won't. I think in a general sense, the, the current approach to many, many levers is the way we're gonna have to go. I think that there are folks in, in this kind of complex situation looking for easy, simple answers, and there are none. And the reality of the situation is we're gonna have to, and I've been on the provincial progress board for reporting to the province on caribou recovery for years, and we always say there's about eight levers, and we really have to pull all eight levers. I think the question that we have to face as society is to what degree we pull all eight levers, and ultimately at what cost? And that's a societal decision that I think we have to figure out ourselves. So I think, you know, in a general sense, we are required by federal law, particularly to do all we can to recover the species, and we have to do that. But ultimately, whether we can or not, I think it's likely a more, a factor of things like climate change is gonna affect that than anything we can do to humans. That's my own sense as a biologist, so we're gonna have to pull those levers because that's the right thing to do, but ultimately, whether we're gonna be able to, whether they will be able to survive or not, is likely, in my opinion, gonna be more to do with climate change than anything else. And that's such a complex thing to be able to deal with in a recovery plan.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Oliver?
The industry, as a whole, the trend, I mean, CMH's had a long history of long-term clients. Is there a move to newer, a pick in a different group, or what's going on in that, in that book?
Uh, we have a very international clientele. We have guests coming from just about everywhere in the world where there are skiers. Uh, I can see that in general, the entire sector, heliskiing and cat skiing is booming right now. BC and Revelstoke, once again, is the epicenter of this, has gained a reputation and a brand worldwide among skiers as the place for real skiing, real mountains, and real snow. And it's something I think we should all be really proud of here.
So we've been a lean year, or relatively lean year this year?
For us, even when it's a lean year, it's a, it's pretty good a year compared to most places.
Okay. Um, parent company, uh, years ago was Hans Moser, hands on, he was, he was, you know, pretty involved in it. It's changed hands, I guess, a couple times since then. The, the parent company today, they're supportive of your mandate on the environment and, and the actions that you've taken to date?
Very much so. The, the current owners, for those who don't know, it's a company called Altera, which is one of the big players on the block now, and RMR is actually partnered as part of the iconic ski pass. They're based in Denver, they're a, a big company, but the principals in Altera, um, I just spent a week with David Perry, who's the, uh, the chief operating officer and president of Altera. He started as a ski instructor in Bath, actually, and has been in the, in the seventies, has been in the ski business all his life. Rusty Gregory, who's the CEO, started as a lift man in 1976, and has been in the ski industry all his life. And David Perry, uh, during, prior to this, he was the chief operating officer of Aspen Ski Incorporated, and he was key in, uh, all sorts of sustainability initiatives at Aspen. And for instance, they, over the years, developed, uh, using methane from closed mines, they generate enough power to offset all the power requirements to run the lifts at Aspen Ski Incorporated. So they're, they're very supportive of, uh, you know, we're installing some microhydro plants, we have one in Galena right now, we're looking at others, you know, those sorts of initiatives are definitely a priority in their mind.
Well, as a city, I know we're trying to move into food waste recycling, and making some moves on the environment and the green in our, our city, but you guys have been pretty active enough to sell.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that has to be some, a model we could sort of follow there. You know, how big plastic bags, single-use plastics, we're trying to, that's our touch and center.
Well, but I think it's, the, the idea, in fact, I was just in Bamford, and this whole kind of conference there about single-use plastics, and certainly, we're trying to get away from it from the perspective of waste, but also, you know, particularly with our lodges, it makes no sense to take things into the lodge, we suddenly have to take things back out again, empty plastic bottles or bags, or whatever it is, so we're trying to get as much of that out of our system as we possibly can for all sorts of reasons. It's just a good thing to do.
Anyone else? Counselor Oliver?
Um, if you had to put a number to it, do you know roughly how much it costs you guys to monitor and mitigate the impacts that your operation has on the caribou? Just like rough?
To be honest, I couldn't give you a number. It's very significant from, I guess, a number of perspectives, I can talk about the kinds of things. I mean, aside from the actual research that we do, I think the biggest cost to us is the actual operation, financial costs, especially with making changes to operations on databases. So moving the helicopters and the guests around, you know, particularly in areas, in times of year like this year, when you've got five or six weeks when you don't have snow, and you're maybe kind of, you know, it's a little tougher to find the best skiing on the best day. If you've got a drainage you'd love to get into, but there's caribou there and you can't do it, that's, there's a cost to the company. So I couldn't put a number on it, but it's very significant, and it keeps, it seems to grow each year. Yeah.
And a lot of that is that legislation requires you to monitor, or is this just you guys being great, you know, citizens?
Well, it's both. I mean, I think there's, the provincial government in particular has a lot of expectations around us, we try and at least meet those, but our, our approach to that was to take it beyond what the government requires. So a lot of times, for example, lichen glating research, I talked about earlier, that's just us trying to think about how we can, how we can play a role in habitat restoration part of the equation, and so that's not something that's what we're legislating to do. So we just like to try and get beyond what we're required to do and do something more.
Anyone else? Gentlemen, thank you, appreciate your time, thank you for coming here and sharing with us. We do appreciate your hosting in our community. We're very much appreciative of all the companies that work here, thank you for coming.
And if you'd like to invite any of us for pre-hiking, we'd be glad.
There's probably some rule against that, isn't there?
I just want my head to go to the same, I'm probably.
Some of us are always willing to push. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Did you do it for caribou research? There you go.
Awesome. Alright, thank you, counselors, we're gonna move on to staff reports. I have nine, eight, uh, financial policies and policies. Property tax distribution. Ms. Kate, you have the presentation.
So much for budgets.
So much for budgets.
I was sure that you're a budget planner.
Well, we won't really be talking about budget too, so. We're gonna be talking a little bit about stuff. Yeah, so.
Can I know about cover?
Yes, that's, you certainly can. Okay, so after that exciting discussion about heliskiing, oh boy, we can talk about property taxes, isn't that fun? Uh, so we're going to start with an introduction to how property taxes are determined. So the process is a little bit backwards for property taxes in a, in a government organization. If you're running a business, you're gonna bring in your products, you're gonna determine what it costs you to bring them in, and then you're gonna add a profit margin to it, and you're going to, that's how you're going to determine your price, and then depending on how much you sell, that then determines your revenue levels. As a government, we go backwards, we figure out how much we need in revenue, and then we look at our basis for assessing the revenue, which is on assessments, and then we do some quick math, and we come up with how much we need to charge everybody to collect that amount of revenue. So because of that, there is, the rates are a direct function of assessed values, and the total tax is obviously the need to be raised. So what this means is that the relationship's a bit inverse, it is inverse, so if assessed values go up, uh, tax rates will go down within a class. So that's something we have to keep in mind when we're assessing tax rates. So just because your assessment value goes up does not mean your taxes go up. If assessments in Revelstoke, like they did in 2019, they went up an average of 19%, that doesn't mean that the city automatically gets a 19% bonus on its revenues. It just means that we're going to lower the tax rate so we collect the correct amount of taxes. So the next thing is the comparability between communities, this is something that people try to do. It is difficult to do because we all have different assessment bases, how much is residential, how much is industrial, how much is business? We also have different market valuations, obviously the value of a piece of property in Revelstoke is different from a piece of property of similar size and condition in Vancouver. Communities also have different priorities and objectives, and so those have, um, those have set the, the ground rules for where everything, like how much they collect from different, um, property classes and things like that, and how much they get from property taxes versus user fees and other things. And so all of those make for differences across communities, it does make it difficult to compare them sometimes. It's also difficult to compare between property classes. The basis for that is because the determination of assessment between property classes is different. So if you have a house, um, the assessment value is based on its market value, they'll look at recent sales. If you have an industrial property, they're going to look at your value, and they're gonna, the land... If you have an industrial property, they're going to look at your value, and they're gonna, the land, certainly, they're gonna value that at market value, but the improvements, they're going to value based on the actual cost of those improvements, less depreciation, what accountants would call net book value of those assets. If you've got a business, a retail business, for instance, they will, they will look at, they look at it as if it's a going concern, and then they value it using an income approach. That's the legislation and what it states that they're supposed to be doing. So, and then farms, they have special valuations, and they actually have restrictions on how much their assessed values can go up year over year. And so if you happen to have farm class.
Not prevent speculation when they are.
Probably it does, yes. And so it definitely, and we don't have a lot of farm class, but I did find it interesting. It's not something I was aware of. So if you took a year, for instance, in Revelstoke, go back to two thousand and eight, where market values in the residential sector went up dramatically, sometimes fifty to a hundred percent, depending on the property. If you, if one of those had been a farm, they would have been limited. They wouldn't, they may have assessed what the value should be, but then they look at the last year's value and they figure out, there's a formula they use to figure out how much they're actually going to increase it. So it's not that enormous.
That's a cross of the province.
Yes.
Yeah, just, the thing about light and major industry, where you said they use a net book value approach to valuation.
For the improvements.
So would that not mean that taxes would steadily decline or the valuation steadily decline?
It can, yes. If they do not make new, if they don't, yeah, they don't make investments in their equipment, then yes, they do see a steady decline.
Right, assuming the land costs are in this cost.
Yeah, the land values will usually go up. Whether they go up enough to offset the decrease in the improvements is.
And how do they get, how does the government get those numbers?
I actually don't know how they determine. I'm assuming they have to ask the businesses that, yeah.
Well, the only way they can get, you know, my revenue outdoors retail numbers is from our corporate tax returns.
Yes, yes, yeah, which I don't think they have access to. I know for some businesses, like I know, for instance, and because the golf course land is owned by the city, we get this request on a regular basis from them, asking them for the revenue numbers for the golf course. And of course, we can't actually answer that because I don't have that, but even then, it's exempt for our purposes, so it's kind of an element.
And everything we decide on tax rates is based on these valuations, of course.
Yes, exactly. So I'm not gonna suggest their system's perfect, but this is what the legislation states that they have, that this is how they determine it, so.
If you were gonna compare between communities, though, you could pick the average assessed value, you'd get an average tax pool, let's say.
You can, yes, for a house. What you can't do is you can't determine, like, so somehow, some industries or some, sorry, some municipalities have large industrial, so a large percentage of their assessment base is industry-based, and that then allows them to use that to subsidize, protect perhaps their residential taxation rate.
But it could be a starting point. You could say, okay, what's the average house value in Big Bridge?
Yes, yes, you can. And definitely, exactly. And in communities that have higher, especially industry, industry in particular, major industry is the big one, and mills are a good example of that in some communities. Yeah, Kinneatt's a great example. Their actual tax rate's quite low, but they have a aluminum smelter that packs a lot.
I was gonna say, yes, in Seashore, they have the dogs and the mill, and my family has a place up there, and they, there was a big thing going on years ago that the residents wanted it gone because it smelled and everything. And basically, the mayor came out and said, well, if we go, if this goes, if that industry goes, your taxes are gonna skyrocket because it was used essentially subsidized the residents.
There is no limit to how much municipality can tax a major industry. Like, there's no, whereas with utilities, there is. The provinces, the utilities, I guess, were probably getting taxed quite severely many, many years ago. And so the province stepped in and said, no, you have to set it based on your business tax rate at two point seven seven times.
Isn't this still a forty dollars per?
That's class two.
Well, that's on light.
No, it's on class two. Yeah, yeah, class two's the only one that's got, where the provincial government actually stepped in and limited. So, but they set a maximum. So the maximum for class two is forty dollars or two point seven seven times your business class rate. In our case, it's the two point seven seven times.
And yet, some communities, their grandfather, it rates greater than forty dollars.
Maybe. Well, you can go more than forty. That's actually.
If it's two point seven.
If it's two point seven seven times, yes.
No, I just, I think when we get to that stage and the allocation per industry, residential, comparing the average for communities throughout B.C. is an easy way for us to say where we fit into the spectrum.
It is, definitely, and I think.
And it's not rocket science. It's just people can relate to this. This is what your house assessment is. This is what a normal person pays in taxes. If we're above or below that, then we have a reason, we have defended or celebrate when we're.
Yes, because.
Yeah, yeah, there's different priorities, but again, we can, that's a base, that's a starting point.
Yes, that data is very easily obtained, and I usually slice it, dice it, and I look at over fives, I look at all different kinds of factors. I'll look at resort communities, and then I'll look at ones that are similar sizes and things like that. So that was some of the information that I provided, just as background information in the reports before of the budget. The other side of it, of course, is the actual cost that you have to incur. Every community has to spend a different amount of money to do things like maintain your roads and do snow removals. So I would suggest, if you were to do, I mean, per capita basis, the amount of money we spend on snow removal is probably.
One of the highest.
One of the highest. Probably Kinneatt might be able to keep up with us. There's probably a few other communities, but I know when I first came here, I went, wow. And then I looked at how much we spent on snow removal, and the base we have to get that money from, it's quite small, right?
Eight or nine years ago, we were in the bottom third cities in B.C. So now that's a starting point. We can compare where we're at.
It'd be interesting to see, actually. I haven't gone back, it must have been eight or nine years ago, I wasn't doing the analysis.
No, but it's just. That's the one that you published. Yeah, yeah. That's a starting point. We can say how we adjusted or where we got from that.
Yeah, definitely. And that's, that's what a lot of this is building on what was done in the past. Historically, there's been certain allocations of splitting up of the pie in property taxes, and going forward is how you do that going forward. So, so I thought, before we got to the mechanics of setting tax rates, I thought a little bit of history might be interesting. So this is just the ten-year average tax increase across the various classes. So if it had been the same amount for all ten years, this is what it would have been. You'll see that, so for residential, the highest the tax increase has been in the last ten years was seven percent. That was in two thousand and nine, so the first year of that ten-year period. It's been as low as ten, or two percent, sorry, ten percent. It's been as low as two percent for three of those years. And then the average is up there at three point nine percent. Business and other properties, which is, oh, sorry.
So just, so you know, we're talking apples to apples. So these numbers are consistent with the fact that we don't normally include sewer water and.
Exactly, this is just property taxes. Yes, not user fees, just property taxes.
Yeah, they're not, those other things are not included.
No, and they are, one of the, there were included, there was an analysis of those in the long-term financial plan, just those on their own, just so you could see those as well. Historically, they've gone up about two percent a year. So major industry, oh, sorry, business and other properties, which is down the list a little bit there. Again, like residential, they've had a high of seven percent in two thousand and nine. They've been as low as zero percent for a year, which was in two thousand and eleven. Councillors, previous councils have made an effort to reduce the burden on business class in particular. And so there's been, out of the, out of the ten years, eight of them, the tax rate has been less than four percent for the business class. And it's also been less than the residential tax increase for eight of the ten years. So there's been quite a push in the last, eight of the last ten years, to try to shift the burden away from business and other, and sometimes also light industry and everybody else, and over to residential.
Counselor Younger?
Gary, wasn't your previous council that you just sat on, Trevor was saying that you guys had tried to do like a two to one or something?
Yeah, we're trying to get it, you know, because it's true.
Right, so you're trying to get it to two to one?
Trying to get it to.
Yeah, just for those people watching, I'd just like to clarify, we're not, the previous councils in doing that were not trying to shift the burden to residential. They were trying to make it a fair distribution between the different classes. Because it was perceived that compared to the rest of the province, our ratios between residential and business were way out of whack, and perhaps quartering are unfair to business. So trying.
I don't, I mean, I kind of tempered that, that word wasn't used, but it was definitely higher for businesses than everybody in the business put that in comparison with what other cities were, and we were sometimes four times higher. And so that was, was trying to make an equitable decision as to where properties were gonna go, or taxes were gonna go with that, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I'm trying, that's what I was trying to say, just that it wasn't shifting the burden, it was more equitable.
Counselor Shirley and Mr. Chabot?
Another comment on the business versus residential balance, that I've had a few customers of mine, residents, comment to me. Because of the way that B.C. assessment deals with vacation rentals, if they book less than the six months, they're classified as residential. If they book more than six months, they go to business. But they're taxed that business tax rate on their home value, where typically a building, business building would have a much lower value, so that business, that tax impact is a much bigger effect on those vacation rentals, which is, in my mind, a lot of reasons why we see so many six-month rentals, leases available to the community. And definitely a challenge that.
There's definitely some challenges.
Which, I mean, if the difference between those two taxes is that dramatic, fair enough.
Mr. Chabot?
Your worship, the assessing tax rate multipliers, and in particular, ratio of business to residential is, is complex. It's difficult because where's the money spent? If we could spatially map where the tax dollars are actually spent. And we do have the old cost of community service studies that say, single-family residential development typically costs you between a dollar to forty, to a dollar sixty for every dollar of taxes collected. And so actually, business and industry is subsidizing the residential areas. I don't know if that entirely holds true anymore. And comparing one community's business class multiplier to another is difficult because different communities will have different degrees of economic viability, that have different amounts of dollar value assessment per area than another community. And these resort communities, typically, they're not supported by the non-resident population to the same degree that a full-time resident population creates. Everybody thinks that all these second home ownership and interest is gonna make business more vital. No, it's gonna cause seasonal spikes, but it's not necessarily gonna support the same as residency and homes year-round. So they're challenging comparisons to make. Communities are vastly different. The rents on Robson Street, Vancouver, are different than the rents on Mackenzie Avenue, Revelstoke. And why can you support those higher rents in Vancouver? Because you have the trade and the transactions going on, you have the population density, you have the wealth, right?
Yeah, definitely.
They're not simple things, and so I've always challenged people who say they should be one-to-one, business to residential. I'd like to know where the money going?
Councillors, any other questions? For, Ms. McKeate?
Thank you. It's the history behind the major industry number up there. So quite a number of years ago, the local Downey came to the city and asked for some, to the councils of the day, and asked for some assistance because their tax, the taxes they were paying were starting to get unaffordable, especially at that particular time when they were probably having some issues with softwood lumber and things like that.
Yeah, that was a point I was gonna make. I think it's not necessarily their taxes were aligned, it's that they were having competitive challenges in their industry.
Yes, and so this was one that they came to council looking for assistance because obviously Downey's one of the larger employees or employers in the city. And so the councils of the day, again, saw the need and wanted to, you know, assist Downey. And so they did give Downey some fairly significant tax breaks for a number of years, and that seems to, I mean, from what I can tell anyways, it seems to have, you know, helped them. And so again, that, it's a redistribution. Is it equitable or not? That's, again, that's something the councils of those days have to determine, and it was determined at that time that that was something that was something, you know, something that they wanted to do. And so that was what, that's why you see that large negative number there. There is a bit of an anomaly with that, too. I think in two thousand and twelve, Downey made a request to the council that their, the major industry tax rate be linked to the light industry tax rate. And so that was done in two thousand and twelve and resulted in, again, another significant reduction in overall taxes for that industry. That was maintained for one year. After that, in two thousand and thirteen, unfortunately, it had the opposite effect. It resulted in a twenty-three percent tax increase for Downey the next year because class five assessments went down, and theirs went up. And so because class five went down, the tax rate went up. And anyways, we'll go on to a little bit more about how that can happen later, but. So we actually, staff recommended, we saw it was gonna happen again the third year, and so then we recommended that we actually not connect those two tax rates to each other anymore because Downey would have seen, they would have lost all the adjustments that they had to their tax base going forward.
Just got a quick question.
Go ahead.
Just, say, twenty-three percent increase, and the rates are already very low.
For big.
Twenty-three, no, for major industry.
Yeah.
A twenty-three percent increase doesn't take you to the current light industry level. When you increase it, twenty-hundred percent on zero is not.
Well, yeah, so what happened was that they would have paid twenty-three percent more than the year before.
Yeah, so that's right. The year before was nominal, very low, and you pay twenty-three percent. Are they comparable now to where they should be?
I think where they should be is probably a good discussion, and that's, again, something that's, that's distribution of the tax pie among the different classes and who should be paying what percentage of it. And it's something you'll wrestle with, and it's something councils forevermore will wrestle with because.
I don't think they're nominal. I think the.
Yes.
Well, that's what, dollars is still really big.
They still, yeah, it's.
Comparable to the land. I mean, the cold is talking about the residential value and then talking about business.
That's part of that story, the commercial rate.
And the other question is, how comparable is the light or the major industry to business?
Yes, well, their rate is definitely higher per thousand.
Business or major?
No, major and light industry. So as far as tax rates per thousand, though, utility is usually the highest, then major industry, then light industry, then business and other, then usually seasonal, and then usually residential. Seasonal, residential are often similar, if not the same. So now we're gonna have a little bit of a discussion about tax rates, and, because we're talking a little bit about shifting and fixed shares and things like that. So we're gonna, I'm gonna run a couple of, some scenarios by you. And so the first one I'm gonna do is show you what we do right now, which is a fixed share floating ratio. And this is a very simple example. So we're gonna start out at one house, one business, it's a very small town. They're each valued exactly the same, and so they're fifty percent each of the assessment base, but the council of this municipality decided that the houses should pay twenty-five percent of that, and the businesses should pay seventy-five percent of that. It's just nice round numbers, makes it easy to do now. The municipality needs two thousand dollars in tax revenue, and so the split becomes five hundred dollars and fifteen hundred dollars. Okay, so now we're gonna just bump up the assessment. So this is based on two thousand and eighteen, when some residential assessments went up by almost a hundred percent, but business still only creeped up about ten percent. We're not gonna have a tax increase because it just keeps the numbers a little bit cleaner and easier to follow. So in year two, keeping the same fixed share, twenty-five seventy-five, we end up again with the residents paying five hundred and the business paying fifteen hundred. So they've seen no change in the taxes they pay, but the tax rates have changed and the ratio has changed. So we've gone from a one-to-three ratio to a one-to-five ratio. Nothing else has changed, though, other than the assessment values. So now I'm gonna take this and do it the other way around. I'm going to fix the ratio, and I'm gonna allow the share of the total to float. So again, we've got the same two houses paying five hundred and fifteen hundred dollars. We've got the same assumptions, but now we're not gonna fix it at five hundred and fifteen hundred going forward. We're gonna fix it at one-to-three ratio. And you'll see there's been a shift of the taxes from the business, the business now pays two hundred and fifty-five dollars less, and the residents pays two hundred and fifty-five dollars more. Everything equal, nothing has really changed. The person and the residents still are in the same money, the businesses still are in the same money. But the taxes have been shifted between the two classes because we've kept the ratio fixed at one-to-three. So that is what happened with Downey when we fixed the class. Their class, their ratio, the class for their major industry to, we fixed it on a one-to-one basis. Major industry to light industry, we fixed it at one-to-one. So the first year it worked in their favor because light industry usually is lower than major industry. But in year two, the Downey assessment was like the residential. It went up quite significantly because they put some investments into their properties. But the class five didn't go up because nobody in class five had made any improvements, at least none that B.C. assessment knew about. And so their assessment values didn't really go up. And so this is what Downey saw. All of a sudden, they saw this big increase in their taxes. And this is why. And so I think this is why the directors of finances, all over, directors of finance all over the municipality, all over the province, bang the drum about fixed ratios and the danger of fixed ratios. It doesn't take much, especially because the residential market is so volatile, fluctuates so much more than, than the business class or the major industry or the light. or the major industry or the light industry for that matter, to cause this kind of shift if you're trying to get to a perceived, a perceived ratio. The question is, what is the right ratio? A business pays its taxes out of after-tax dollars. So for every dollar of taxes they pay, they get to deduct it. So they only have to earn, say, 80 cents on the dollar. Whereas a resident, you have to pay it, sorry, they pay it up pre-tax dollars. We pay it up after-tax dollars. So you have to earn probably a dollar thirty or a dollar forty sometimes, probably a dollar thirty, to pay that same dollar in taxes that they only have to earn 80 cents to do. So that's sometimes I think where this two to five, 2.5 ratio may come from. I'm not 100% sure. But anyways, this is just to kind of show you. So then I thought I'd make things a little bit more complicated. So now we're going to in fact, I'm going to show you what happens when we have non-market change. So again, same two businesses, same business, same house, just one of each right now. But in year two, we've got one new house and one new business. Oh, sorry. I just have a new house on this one. My apologies. We have one new house. It was built for $200,000. We have the same value of the residential going up by 100%. Business went up by 10%. I did add a bit of a tax increase in there just to, so I'm just going to use, see if I can use the laser for this. So you'll see over here for the first house, right, this is, we do the calculation first, ignoring non-market change. So we said we had 10, $2,000 of taxes last year. We wanted 5% more. So now we have $2,100. So there's my tax rate. And I'm keeping my, I'm going back to what we normally do, which is keeping the share fixed. Okay, 2575, which puts the ratio out of quite, quite a bit higher than previous year, right? So in the second year, now I've added in the second house. So there's the new taxes from the second house and we've got the business, of course, it's increased. And then that's the, that's the bonus we get from the new house. Because we determined the tax rate without it in the equation. We left it out. I don't know if that makes sense. It's kind of.
And then that was additional money brought in afterwards.
Exactly. So that's where when I budget for non-market change revenue, that's why. Because when we determine the tax rate, I leave the non-market out of it.
See, I don't really.
Well, I do eventually know what it is, but this is.
But at the beginning, you don't, yeah.
No. And that's how, that's how the, the revenue, the property tax revenue grows over time the most is through non-market change.
Right.
Because obviously if you're building new houses, we're not using them to figure out the tax rate the next, you get that bonus the first year.
Yeah.
Then going forward, you get the increase from.
But then it would be an after.
Yep, it would be. Yeah. So you only get it first year.
But if you're only taxing to gain what you need to spend, that money should be, it should be lower.
Well, that's where I come in with the non-market change revenue. So I budget a certain amount for non-market change in revenue as well. Yes. Yeah. So I do build it in, but.
You're building a savings account.
Well, I'm building it into our operating revenues. So if you look.
We have more than we need to spend.
Well, sometimes you do. It depends on how much non-market change you have, right?
If there was a big year, yeah.
It's cool to say a big year this year. We have.
But it could be used to alleviate the tax increase of the following year.
That's what I'm saying. You're using it.
In the current year, I will build some revenue in from non-market change to, and that goes to help keep the overall tax increase lowered. I do keep it conservative to what I think we're going to be getting because I don't want to count on money that we don't.
Show up.
Yeah. Sometimes the non-market change numbers I get in November are not the same ones I get in March. And so, February.
So the reserves that we've had or are they supplement? But we need to build reserves for infrastructure. The non-market change, that's where that money should.
Yes. So if it's more than I budget for, it'll do one of two things. It'll either fall to the bottom and become accumulated surplus, which is what historically it does do. Or it will, I could look at it and say, you know what, we got this bump. We didn't, I didn't budget for it. We didn't need it. It can go into reserves. It's also been used to help lower tax rates, tax increases for certain, once it's more than what I think, what I budgeted. It's been used to lower tax rates or tax increases for certain classes. So that's been done once.
I was just going to say, I mean, typically, because I remember you saying, hang on, what are the number you budgeted for this year? But you're typically basing it off an average. So typically you're pretty bang on. There's not much left over at the end.
Not usually, yeah.
So we're not building reserves.
Historically though, they didn't actually budget for that revenue. They actually did do exactly what Council Elliot was saying. They literally, it was just a bonus at the bottom that then ended up going into either accumulated surplus or into reserves usually. Sometimes it went to covering unexpected expenses, just depending what happened that year.
But if you didn't budget for this to some extent, then it would actually cause the property taxes to actually increase then that year because you wouldn't have that as revenue coming in.
Exactly. So there's 75,000 in the 2019 budget year. I budgeted 75,000 as non-market revenue.
And if we didn't, then theoretically we'd be at almost 1.5% higher tax rate.
Yes. Yeah. So I am using part of it, a conservative part of it, but part of it to reduce the tax increase.
Yeah. It's great in a booming economy, it's worth it. But I guess you want your budget to be pretty exact. I mean, we're smothering the game of making money.
No, no, definitely not. No, definitely not. And that's what we try to do. We try to keep it as close to the line without being in a position where we might make things unviable.
Yeah. And I would think, you know, in a normal situation, we keep watching your bottom line to make it work. But if you've got this whole extra food's coming in, okay, come on, the growth in the housing world or the business world.
So just one more because, and it's the only difference between this one and the next one is that I added a new business. So same there. And then that's what it looks like. So now you'll see we have quite a bit of extra income there. $3,388 because we added new business.
At the bottom there with the hundred.
Yeah, there's a new business there. And so because the business tax rate is higher than the residential tax rate even here. I mean, in my example, it's higher, but overall it's always higher. Adding new business, definitely. I, I, I do like to see additional class four, five and six.
Of course. That's what we need to do. Track more businesses to.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'm a money's person. I'd like to see a little bit more if I can.
Can I just ask a question if I may?
Yeah.
Alan, so when we were about talking about the RCMP thing, you were, with your belief that we should be budgeting the 1313. What is your thoughts on then with the, with the budgeting for the non-market or new construction essentially? Have you seen municipalities not budget at all and tax accordingly and then decide on the funds after? Or is your experience that they always budget to a certain extent?
I'm not fortunate to be in communities that are experiencing growth. So we actually came to rely on and anticipate the increased tax revenue from new construction. And we take a five-year average typically and budget around that. Just like we budget for one of the things you might not have noticed in the financial plan. We'll be budgeting for penalties on late payment of property taxes. We're probably anticipating $100,000 in revenue. And if we decided we're going to ask the minister to allow us to forego the penalty for late payment, we'd have to make up that $100,000 somewhere else as well.
I didn't see, we're budgeting a hundred grand this year in revenue from penalties?
Can we send a penalty if you're late?
Yeah. Yeah.
Whoever you waited half a year to collect the money that you've been spending.
And it's pretty consistent around that number actually. It's about a million dollars in taxes not paid on time every year.
Really? And that's just something.
Those are the people that see me a couple of days after.
Oh, yeah.
That's me in your way.
It's after they've seen me and I tell them sorry.
Oh, because they don't want to pay the penalty. But you've known ever since you've owned a home that you pay every July?
Yeah.
People have some pretty good reasons.
My, I hate my taxes.
It's really rare. You're not authorized to do a refund. You need the minister's approval to do so.
On, on the penalty?
On the penalty.
So is it provincial legislation that there is a penalty then?
Yes.
Yeah, it gives you the flexibility as to how much of what you impose it. I've worked in communities where it's 5% after the first business day in July. And then it's another 5% after the middle of September.
Okay.
But we just do the whole 10%. I think that's what the majority do.
It's just a, is it 10%? There's nobody doing like 20% or anything.
No, your 10 is your max.
We're just 10. Okay.
All communities are 10% in total. It's just a matter of when you apply it.
Oh, I'm just asking.
Yeah. Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So everybody started paying their taxes on time before go that?
Hundred grand.
But it's been like that as long as I've been here. I'm not really expecting everyone to pay them on time even going forward. So.
I'm going to do some of my mortgage payments.
Yes. And a lot of people take advantage of our property tax installment program now, which is great. Because then all you have to do is remember to claim your homeowner grant.
Right. Yeah, that's what I do.
And how old do you have to be for property tax deferral now? Is it 55?
For what? Sorry.
Property tax deferral?
Yes, 55.
Oh, right.
Yes.
If you can invest that money in a reasonable rate of, in terms of the province. Because the province pays it. And you pay the really cost. You can actually make a lot of money.
So just in terms of the deferrals then, so we still get that money. The province pays it to us. And then when the property is sold or the person passes away, like I know a lot of seniors from that now. Then that money from the estate actually doesn't come to the city. It goes back to the province.
Yes. At that point, we have, once the province pays us.
And then we also get a money where I don't shoot for over $5 million in deferrals. Okay.
The deferrals have, it's a, it's a provincial program that the province offers up.
It's terrific.
It is, yeah.
I don't know.
I just, I don't know.
55 though, Gary.
I'd just like to understand the diagram. So someone who's 55 or older, they have to choose to not pay the tax.
If they, if they own, yeah, there's certain requirements obviously with provincial program. You have to own, I think you have to have more than 25% equity in your home.
Right.
And so, yeah. So and it depends. They have to.
I can tell you, my grandparents do it. They live in Burnaby, just so the let them down. And their home's about half the size of this room, but they live on two acres across from the cemetery. It's valued at almost $4 million. So their property taxes are going to be almost $15,000 a year. And they're 90 and military veterans. So they defer.
Yeah.
So with the deferral program, the province pays the taxes for the municipality.
Yes.
And then they, there's a, there's some sort of financing charge over this minimum.
I, I don't know actually, I don't know what their interest rate is. It's, I can find it out.
As it comes out of the equity of the home when it's sold.
Right.
So if you're doing that at 55 and you look at 85, you've got 30 years of taxes. Could it be all the equity?
Could be.
We're a good shot.
Right. Well, that's why I was saying 55, I, I mean, I don't know. But I mean, for people that are in their 80s or 90s and struggling, you know.
Well, it's a great number. I wasn't aware of it. It's a really good tool for people who are struggling with their income with the, with tax increase.
I think there was a report on the news that said lasting, last year Metro Vancouver's increased by something like 40%.
Their properties, $1.5 million. So they're paying 15,000 a year. He defers it.
Yeah.
And his comment is, you guys can deal with it while I'm.
Well, I hope you're going to get that massive new value of it, right?
Well, you're.
The other way over the last 12 years would be a huge.
I wonder about this, the housing market crash.
Yeah, in a perfect world, the cost of municipal taxes gets them better than.
That's why they make, that's why they require certain.
Right.
They use, they require a certain equity level to begin with.
Okay.
Anyways, if you want to know more about it, come see my staff. They will fill you with all the details.
Damn, I don't think I qualify. About four years.
So that's enough discussion about numbers and ratios and tax rates and non-market change and things like that. So now we're going to move on to a little bit here. So one of the resolutions before you today for recommendation to council is to continue to use, continued use of the financial plan objectives and policies that are related to taxation and revenue and permissive exemptions that were used in 2018. So this is a policy that was established, oh dear, I've got the policy somewhere. It's been a long time now. F9 was established, I believe, in 2008 or 2009. And it kind of, you would have gotten the policy originally when you first started. Not sure if you read it or not.
It's a problem in the process.
Oh, okay. There you go. So I'm recommending that we just continue on with the way we're going with that. Use it. And then it is part of the one of the, is one of the policies I'm intending to update in 2019. That and the grant aid policy, which currently permissive tax exemptions are in our grant aid policy. And I've been promising to update it for a few years now. So now I'm going to actually do it. So in the, in, this is, we're going to do the updates to get consistency between the old policies and the new policies. There's a few of them left that have to be updated. But anyway, so that's one of the recommendations. It's in front of you.
Oh, my God.
So, well, almost, yeah, that's okay.
Anxious?
Can I bring a prayer?
No. Well, so this, this whole presentation really is a little bit of a precursor to that update.
Right.
Giving you a little bit of a touch on how things work. When we do the update, we will discuss some of the recommended policies to be included in that. And so there is some, some white papers out there and things like that that discuss what kind of principles you should include and be looking at. Things like equity and fairness, stability, neutrality, simplicity and accountability. And so we'll go through that.
And we'll be doing that this like summer kind of thing?
Yeah, probably in the summer, summer, early fall.
From an expectation for next year to change.
Yeah, to get it updated so that we have it available for 2019.
Perfect.
So. And then the other one in front of you is the recommendations for the tax increase and that it be applied equally across all tax, property tax classes, except utilities, of course, as we spoke about. The utilities, when we always want to maximize it. And so rather than setting there is a four and a half percent increase, we'll just, I will take the 2.77% times the business class rate. And that will be a larger increase for utilities.
4.5 times 2.77.
Basically, yeah. So that's the recommendation that's in front of you to go to council. There is the opportunity to shift again, reallocate, I guess, just to start using the word shifting verb. To reallocate more equitably between the property tax classes. I would recommend that this year we keep it simple and then we can delve into that as part of the policy update and some discussions around that before we get to next year's.
Okay. So.
So that's, that's, I'm.
That's the presentation. All right. So in your package, staff reports tonight.
Gary, Michael, for the question.
Oh, sorry, Mike. So is RMR corporate? Do you be a little bothered?
As far as I'm aware, yes. Yes. We didn't even have a farm tax class, a farm class rate until that came.
Is that a property on 23 in March too? Yeah.
Uh, maybe. I honestly, there's not a lot of value there. So.
Cape Town and.
On, it's like, literally, I don't even think it's a thousand dollars of the value that's sitting in farm class. It's so minor.
Is the sentence still going in as presidential or?
No, it was, it's in his business, but that may get resolved before the tax, before the, like, for this tax year. So I can't really say too much. I mean, I can't really, but I will bring you guys something about that when I get the numbers.
Any further questions? Jackie, you want to put this more.
Yes, I do. Committee of the Board of Municipalities, council of the city's 2019 property tax distribution, be approved.
Is there a second to clarify motion? Answer for a cell. Any further discussion on the motion?
Is this including the 4.5 then?
This means distributing the 4.5 equally across.
I'm just curious what Rob's thinking because his face keeps going.
Unfortunately, that really wouldn't do you much good to increase the farm class. It's actually set equal to business class, just so you know. The farm class rate's actually the same as the business class rate in our community.
There's the assessment.
But the assessment's where they get it. Yes. Yes.
I'm not, I'm not anti-Downey or I have to come up on the floor, but I, I just, the only major industry that we have is Downey. Their, their rates, comparable rates, looking at the overall tax rate compared to somewhere in the form RMR is very different. The revenue that they take from one end to the, compared to the other are so.
You know, I've got some analysis on, on Downey's tax rates historically and things like that. I can bring that back to you maybe to committee to hold later dates or something like that. We could.
Downey's been really engaged with the city though.
They're happy.
Typically, it's every year they will come and present them. This is an exception year where they, they didn't have them. I don't know if that means they're happy with the.
There's definitely a recognition of the.
But I just think with everything going on with softwood lumber dispute still, really unresolved, the massive tariffs Trump's put on them and now this Caribou thing, I think we should be walking a fine line here. Just because, yeah, if we were to, I just think that they've done exceptionally well for the last number of years. And they constantly promote a, a major input and incoming to our community. And that, that's, that's a big win. But is that the fact that they're paying less taxes high, you know, they're such a.
Well, if, wait, interrupt, sorry. Are they not our single largest taxpayer?
Yes.
Single largest taxpayer?
I don't know.
I mean, definitely.
Other than utilities.
Um, I would say this EHO would be next.
Would be next?
Hydro be first. Ski will be probably next. I can confirm that. The other side of it too, to think about too, is that unlike some communities that have relied heavily on their major industry, we don't rely heavily on our major industry, which means that we're a little bit more.
Flexible?
Well, we're more insulated from risk, I guess.
Does it down, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If we were to rely such way more heavily on Downey's logging those crafts, we would be in big trouble. Because if we moved that. We would be in big trouble, cause if we looked at.
But that can be applied to any industry.
Yeah, it can, oh definitely.
Yeah, so, so it'd be equitable.
Yeah.
What, what is, what is the, what is the number, if they're making a, a exorbitant amount of profit at the expense of very cheap taxes, you know, and then other entities are not getting that same break, it seems like a little, a little unjust, so that's what we wanna be careful of.
Like the federal government giving Loblaw groceries, twelve million to clean their two air bridges, and not my store?
Yeah, I just, I just have some concerns, that's all, I don't think it's.
Well, I think, I think your concerns are noted, council, and I think they've dealt, um, in this situation, as Council Youngker has, has stated this year, I, I'm comfortable in us leaving things the way they are, but I think that um you've noted some things that we're gonna look at in the future.
Yeah.
Um, and it's on our radar as we go forward, so.
Yeah, I would ju, I would just say that I think, you know, once we kind of see where this Caribou thing is going, and by the time we start doing it this summer, that we should be taking a good look at what your. You have valid points there.
I've just spent, you know, I'll get to you in a minute, just having spent three days with, with the forest industry people and, and whatnot, and their contributions to to their communities, but also uh, so many things up in the air regarding the forest industries right at the present time. I think we would be well advised to just leave alone this year.
I, 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 I don't think that's just to the forestry, I think every recreational, every tourist, that, that, anything in town is gonna be influenced by this Caribou thing. So, so, but there, and if you look at the RMI tax and all the other, they're all, we're all in the ship together, so I don't.
Well, Caribou, yeah.
So, so one of, one of the big movers and shakers as far as lumber might not go, have a lot to do with what we can export, we are being taxed on tariffs very high, uh, you know, south of the border, the softwood lumber dispute's not gonna be dealt with anytime soon, so when I hear the Americans come or the Canadians are in the US, come and tell us what we're doing, I think we'd be well advised to just leave alone this year. Every industry has been affected, as you're saying, I, I get that, but I'm content at this point. So if there's no further discussion on this motion, I'm gonna ask for a vote. Any further comment? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Item number two.
That the committee of the board recommends to cancel, that the city's two thousand and nineteen financial plan objectives and policies related to taxation, revenue, and permissive tax exemptions part of two thousand and nineteen financial plan by law, which reflect no substantial changes from those in two thousand and eighteen, be approved.
Third, second to file a motion, Council Sherlett, any discussion on that motion?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No further discussion on that motion, all those in favor? Motion's carried. I just gonna do, okay, go through communications, while Council Ryan makes a run for it. Uh, Redstone Fire Service Rescue's First Order Report two thousand and nineteen, any comments on that?
I just had a question, but I'm not here, so maybe pass it on. With the fire and life safety inspections, include regular inspections, follow-up inspections, final review, and pre-site inspections? Like, are they inspecting like possible boarding homes? Like, who would we call about that, or should they be going, cause that's clearly, I got one behind my house, it's clearly a fire issue, there's thirteen, fourteen people living in this three-bedroom place, and if that place catches on fire, we're gonna have a big problem here.
That's always a concern for us, Miss Lo, did you wanna weigh in on that?
Yes, for sure, if there is a concern, make a complaint.
The bylaw or the fire department?
Um, you could start with bylaw, you could start with the fire department, we will always include the fire department, possibly the RCMP, but we do follow up on them. It's, it's a tough thing to enforce, people um make excuses, we have to put together a lot of evidence to actually.
Well, these folks are just visiting, people say, cause there's other, people can live, they're a person, they're in a single family dwelling.
Let's be able to enter the only go look, you'll find fourteen mattresses.
Tough, yeah.
Yeah.
And they say, oh, they're just visiting, they're just.
And that's definitely when the fire chief kicks in, because it is, becomes a health and safety issue, and there's mine, so they can do separate from the city mine, so.
Yeah, good.
It's always, uh, Council Youngker's always a concern, especially from the, from my perspective, dealing with emergency services, when there is a fire and all of a sudden, we have to look after eight or ten or twelve people who are not related, you know, displaced, so that is a burden on it's not just us, but the provincial government, though it comes down to safety, we don't wanna see any tragedies. Uh, definitely the fire people go through, you know, most uh, commercial businesses once a year, once every two years, and go through that, but having this sort of stuff when there's a complaint, they're willing to look at it.
Up on time, the best we do on most is make sure they're working small businesses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly. Any, anything further on fire services? Moving on to bylaw enforcement, monthly summary, any questions, any concerns?
When are, when are you bringing that to us? The changes that you want me to do?
Adjudication.
Oh, the adjudication?
Like the adjudication, and you said that the, talking about the direction that I wanna go with it.
That was more for communications, for bylaw enforcement, it was towards wages, so I have posted internally for a full-time which um, I think there's only one qualified person that closes in an hour. I've got one resume, so um, it will probably be an internal promotion to full, so I have two full-time, and I'll advertise as soon as you approve the budget for a part-time, so we two full-time, one part-time.
Please.
Yeah.
Moving on to business, license summary, any questions, concerns regarding that? Parks, Recreation and Culture, monthly summaries, any questions, concerns on that? Check requisition report for March two thousand and nineteen, any questions on that, Council Cross?
Uh, just one, seventeen thousand, so to tell us.
The insights.
Oh, the insights.
Oh, and the insights, of course.
Yeah, there's two.
Yeah, okay, makes sense, just seemed like.
It's a hell of a phone bill.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, I don't have a question about this, if anybody else, but I just wanna ask, cause um, about the gas tax? Cause um, I don't know, maybe I missed it, like I knew that that had happened, but we didn't get talked to about it, but then I saw that you guys were talking to the, the newspapers about it.
I got notified, when did we get the notification?
Last week, maybe, if it was a bonus payment.
So, um, so are we just going to reserve it, I'm just wondering, cause I see.
It always goes in reserves, so when we bring it in, it's revenue, and we transfer it to, I transfer whatever we receive straight over to reserves.
Yeah.
This year's budget has certain expenditures being, coming out of those reserves in the budget, and if there's additional things, then we would come to, come some talk with.
Right, so now we just have three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, whatever, there's extra city and reserves for now.
That's been taken around by years, what do I use it for?
Cause I was gonna say, I mentioned that RMI, that we fund part of our, uh, the shuttles from gas tax, right?
The uh, the lease on the transit buses is paid on, presented by gas tax.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Um, do we fund our share of the shuttle service from gas tax too?
That's what I meant, I got confused.
Uh, yeah, so I think that's gonna form, I can.
Okay.
I think it's.
Uh, we were buying, we were actually buying the shuttle.
We did buy the buses, the shuttle buses.
But I think they operate, we're funding them somewhere else.
Yeah. The purchase of the buses.
So is that something that um, we'll look at for budget next year, or is that something that if we need it now, it's out?
It's a company idea, a lot of great ideas, it's very different for a very rare, if council desire something to be done, it's consistent, this program, Brown, is I kind of agree, there's a good investment we can make in updating the facilities of Williams Lake.
Well, that's what I read.
Probably, probably isn't quite on target to that.
Cause it doesn't mean kind of like the direction that they did say it needs to spend on, kind of thing?
Yeah, they have program guidelines, it's kind of related.
Doesn't. Oh, no.
Any, uh, any further questions, Council Sherlett?
He'd say true cost, what, what is that today?
Oh, no. I think over the hundred, twenty thousand dollars, there was, the initial hundred was split three ways, uh, the city, RMR, and Rob. Each, and then there was the, the point of origin data, it wasn't contracted, and RMR and Rob, only got that extra twenty. So it's a great, a great thing for us.
And, and, and then the.
Hey, but is the city sure of the uh, tell us insights data cost, come from ELO funds?
Um, a little bit of it, I'm not sure how much, I think, I'm thinking seventeen thousand, I think.
Oh, okay, so it's a great deal, so, yeah, and I think we're, we're, we're the game fag on this issue, is that right?
We're the first, for those, for some, so, we're the tourism association here, we uh, worked with California Insights Data, third and Meyer Canyon Trestle System. Oh, yeah, they targeted, because they used to put kids there with counters in the summer months.
Yeah.
They had an idea of the level of use of Saturday, September, October, early November, they just blew their minds to see how many people were out there on this trail in all the seasons, so they're targeting their, their marketing with it.
So, I, I guess that it is a dramatic shift for us in our number, right? It is, it's so much, our, means our entire local community we had in place is also.
Well, we have to.
I wonder how they get that, cause what I'm getting at is, you know, all our planning to be our, everything's been set on path based on what we started with second six hundred people in the census, now we're at double that, and I say, where do we start? We have control, I'm starting frustrating, what, cause, cause I don't, I think we're so far behind on so many levels, if that, if that number's accurate. And I say, well, how do we balance that number?
Well, we're still working on that. Still, they are coming, right, that's a big task for, we're still working on that.
James and me and I, we're telling insights, the analytics team, and we need tomorrow to do a sales evaluation strategy of different ways we're working with that. There are people to roll out stories about it, so we'll talk about impact and how it's, impact on services, emergency services. And they will provide us with.
That's gonna be twenty.
Explain, Dr.
Committee of the Board, I mean, it doesn't, it's, it's, it's a big goal very often.
Oh, so from the last one?
Yes. Alright, any further discussion on check requisition report? So now I'm gonna ask someone to make a motion to go in camera pursuant to section ninety-two, be of the committee charter, Council Sherlett, Councilor Youngker. All was in favor, motions carried, we're gonna go in camera.